You're a person who believes in freedom of speech. You have to fight and say what you feel and let the chips fall where they may.
You can't say whatever you want and then face some sort of repercussions for it later.
Nice one, Scott. Nothing else on the world smells like that.
Kansas has possibly the weakest open records law in the country.
Retaliatory animus had it not been for that negative feeling towards speech, they would have not done that.
We can tell either 200 men against your boy is a no win situation for us.
All right, all right, all right, all right. Welcome, Doc.
How you doing, brother?
I'm doing all right. Looks like we've got a few people in there. I'm glad I figured out that echo before we got live. I had the other screen open. So that was what was making that a little bit. But I want to welcome everybody in. We had some some interesting, interesting updates with Amber Sellers here.
Yeah, there's that LJ World article that came out today about her returning to the commission meetings after her absence. Her self-appointed exile to the back room.
Yeah, let's, let's just go ahead and throw that up here to give some, give people some idea. This is the Lawrence Journal rag around town here. And Amber Sellers had left the commission room. She decided that during public comment, she was just gonna go sit somewhere else or attend remotely is what she tried to pass off at first. And she's come back and we're gonna go through that timeline a little bit, but she's come back and she got called out pretty heavily for being back in there and asking what she's doing. But the very next day she hits the paper with Chad Lawhorn and talking about this abusive behavior and you know, she uses these words all the time, but I've never seen any reports of her documenting any of these threats or abuses with police or anything, Doc. Have you gotten any word of any kind of investigations of threats that you've made toward Amber that's made her feel unsafe?
No, and that's what makes the, the reporting on this just so so, you know, awful is that they, they continue to report it as fact from Amber that there's been threats received there by the commissioners and that there's this abusive behavior. Without actually stopping to consider that those are crimes that Amber, if those are true, that Amber should have reported, they could easily follow up on that stuff and on top of that, you know damn well that if there ever was any sort of a threat or a crime committed, there will be articles written by LJ World already. They could just reference back to that article, but none of that exists because no threats have happened. There has been no abusive behavior or however they want to describe it. This is all been about speech and words.
And you know, Doc, we're seeing this exact same thing across the board. We see the exact same thing in Elk County that we ran into down there. We're seeing the exact same thing with reluctant prophet and this thing he's going through with that Judge Bell. Who, who is suing him and writing down orders and stuff, but it's, it's, it's an attack on free speech. And if nothing else, it's incredibly stifling. It makes you afraid to talk. It makes people afraid to speak.
Well, it's, it's their MO. It's, it's the way that they take speech and convert it into behavior or conduct. And so now they've taken something that is a freedom, which is speech and they reframed it as being, well, that's, it's a behavior. We're not after the speech. It's the behaviors of you guys. And meanwhile, we're like, well, what behaviors are you even talking about?
Exactly.
If we all had any integrity, an ounce of integrity, they, they would, they would question that and they would look into it. And third of all, they have reporter there every meeting.
A hundred percent.
That could be like, uh, you know, actually I don't see any behaviors. I just see what's, you know, the words that are being spoken. They don't need to do that. They just report it as fact, as though that, that's what's happening there.
A hundred percent. And so we read down through this and she, it says here, Lawrence City Commissioners returned to the commission meeting room during general public comment after having absented herself for about two months. Well, whether she, whether she'll remain in the room is the question.
Let's, let's go through the timeline here real quick then. Basically, what happened then is back in
Back to this. This is the August 6th meeting, man. This is the one that, that she got mad at because this is where she left.
Well, hold on a second. Hold on a second. But see what, what happened leading up to this back in June of this year. Josh Sidon, who you'll see down there in that bottom left corner that is about to speak at this meeting. He, he was the deputy district attorney there in Douglas County. And he dressed up as me at work one day on a Friday and then by Monday he was out of his job.
Yes, he was.
For, for doing that, for dressing up. And, and so then fast forward here to this is August 6th, like five weeks later. He's applied for the community police review board that they nominated and appointed and voted on by the city commission there.
Exactly.
The papers had been reporting on it, but they were not reported. They were like, oh, we don't, we don't know which commissioner nominated Sidon. And Michael here, the citizen journalist extraordinaire there had already broken the story that it was Amber Sellers that had done it, where the other reporters wouldn't say a fucking thing. Or even bother to find out. Michael already knew and he knew from the literal horse's mouth. And, and so and this is the footage of him dressed up as me.
Yeah, you can see, you can see Sidon walking around here dressed up like the doc with a cap and a bullshit wig. And right over here is Suzanne Valdez pointing and laughing and having a good time with it too.
Yep. Yep. And so then at that August 6th meeting, then I, I call out Amber Sellers for nominating Sidon because it's, it's a terrible look. The guy had just gotten fired for, for this bullshit right here. Now we're gonna put him on a police biasing patrol board, you know, kind of thing.
Right.
And so Amber, tone deaf as she is, went ahead and nominated him. And like I was saying, the papers were being like, oh, we don't know who it is that did it. But I knew because Michael had already reported it and and me, and not only did he report it, but he, he went to LJ World and was like, hey, guys, I, I know who it is, you know, and they still wouldn't believe him. He gave them
They sat on it. They wouldn't touch it. They wouldn't touch it because they carry for her, man. And that's exactly what they're doing.
They're a bunch of cowards, man. They're a bunch of fucking cars. They have no, they have no integrity whatsoever, not an ounce of it at all. And so then in August 6th here at this meeting, I go up there and I, I say, well, Amber, you're the one that did it more or less, you know, called, called her out for it. And she immediately tries to shut me down speaking. And so
But now let's, let's look what happened here, Doc. Let's, let's let this play.
Hold on a second. Yeah, but this is important. So, so what, what happens is of why she even stepped away from the meetings is that when I spoke, then I went ahead and said, well, what if it was Sidon had been impersonating you? And then I went and I described this, you know, stuff and all that stuff. And after that meeting is when she was no longer going to be sitting up there. And that's when her absence started and it didn't
Exactly.
Didn't return until just, you know, two weeks ago or whatever it was. And so this is that meeting right there.
We'll talk about her return in a second, guys. Here's, here's that meeting and, and notice that this is Sidon when he comes up and talk and pay attention to what he says because it's gonna be important when Doc gets up there and talks. If it'll play. I got so much open here. I'm having a little computer lag. I don't usually have this much stuff open.
I don't hear nothing.
All right, guys. We've apparently got some sort of an audio issue going on here. Are you guys not hearing this? Damn it. I hope I haven't screwed something up here. What'd I do, Doc?
I don't know. I couldn't hear anything, but I thought it was just because when you press play like that, sometimes it mutes it on its own on our end.
Holy crap. Boy, I hope this isn't a this is gonna be a technical glitch for me. I don't know what's going on here.
Well, pull up your next video and see if it plays and has sound.
See if it'll play.
See if it has sound. You got your volume turned up?
You guys got any volume on this yet? No volume. It's oddy. No, god dang it. I'll tell you what, let's just close out of that and we will try something else here. I'm gonna try to pull those back up real quick. Bear with you guys for just a moment.
Hey, Clinton Hanson said, make sure you share the sound in StreamYards.
Oh, I thought I had. Well, this will be an episode where we've had a little technical glitch, guys. But we will get over it here pretty damn quickly.
That's fine. That's no big deal.
No, what's gonna happen here though, guys? What's happening is that Sidon goes up there and speaks. And then I go up and talk about it. And then Justin gets up there and talks about it and they all of a sudden have to shut him down. And this is the crazy thing about this. When they do that, it, it always has some kind of a comparator, Justin, where, where they've just allowed somebody else to do the same thing, but not allowed you.
Exactly. And, and in that case, this was a general public comment. And earlier in the meeting had been the item of the community police review board. And so so Sidon then a general public comment, the video that we were playing there, they couldn't hear the audio on Sidon went up there and he spoke. And basically it was like, you know, giving his resume and pleading his case to be considered to be on the community police review board. And then a couple of speakers after that, Michael goes up and speaks and he, he talks about the community police review board as well. And neither one of them are stopped at all. They're allowed to speak. And so then I go up right after Michael. I'm the next speaker after him. And I go ahead and say that Amber is the one that nominated Sidon for that spot there. You know how I'd been saying earlier that the papers just refused to report on who it was. They're playing dumb like, oh, we don't know which
Yep. Here, let's put this up. I've got it going again. Let's see if everybody can hear this. I pull, I reloaded it and we should be back up and going now.
In his own office.
You guys got some audio now?
I can hear now.
And got fired because of it.
This is me finishing up and I had just got done talking about Sidon.
And now he wants to come back and make all amends and serve. What has it been? Two weeks, three weeks? Seriously?
And here comes Justin. Now watch what happens. This is the, the left-handed
Before anybody continues, can we please stop the cross chatter? Thank you. I didn't want to interrupt anyone, but between people, I just wanted to make that known. Thank you.
Pay attention here, guys.
All right. My name is Dr. Justin Speace and it's really me. It's not Josh Sidon dressed up in a wig. Notice he was here earlier trying to plead his case to you guys. He was fired for impersonating me while on the clock there at the District Attorney's Office. And I'm sure you like that Amber Sellers. He, you nominated him to be on the community police review board after he had been fired for that obvious and clear bias
Point of order.
Towards me.
Can you Sorry, discuss boards and commissions. Sir.
So how come you didn't stop Michael just a minute ago and he was speaking about it there, Amber? Cause I called you out as the one that nominated Josh despite his clear bias towards me, towards the community. I mean, put yourself in my position there, Amber.
Point of order.
I see you're wearing a large yellow shirt right there and some ridiculously oversized glasses there.
Sir, sir.
What if he put on a big old yellow shirt stuffed it with pillows, put on some ridiculous glasses and started stuffing his face with some food?
Earned.
And it was all caught on camera. And then I was up there as
Sir, this is your warning.
What have I done wrong?
Exactly.
What have I done wrong? What was the point of order for? What have I done wrong? Talk about now.
Yeah.
The business of the commission? Okay. So you, Amber Sellers, as a commissioner nominated Josh Sidon to a position up here. Is that germane enough?
Sir, this is your warning. If you can
Okay, Bart, explain to me how I am not being germane right now, please.
Sherry, whoa. Now, you know, here's the thing though, Doc.
Typically, commission
So, and Sherry's gonna explain it to them, but both Josh Sidon and I had been up there talking and now they're gonna shut you down for saying the exact same, talking about the same exact subject, right?
Yeah.
And now here, listen to Sherry have to explain to Bart how to, how to run the meeting though.
But, but even her explanation isn't the right explanation. The explanation is, well, you just allowed those two guys as well. And also on top of that, even if their rule of you can't speak about that item again was one that they could enforce like that. I'm no longer speaking about that. I'm directly saying to Amber, what if he's dressed up like it's, it's not even related to that. I'm just saying like, can have some empathy for me. It's not even related to that, that topic. So for them to continue to say that I'm off topic and not germane or talking on the, the previous topic like that. I'm no longer talking about it, but they
He doesn't know, she doesn't know what empathy is, man. She doesn't know what empathy is.
Well, I'm just saying, like, I wasn't talking about that. You've historically allowed folks to comment on that during public comment. You did not take public comment on nominations.
Okay. All right. So continue. Your time has been paused. You still have approximately a minute and forty-five. Okay. So like I was saying, put yourself in my position there, Amber Sellers. You're wearing a large oversized yellow skirt and some ridiculously oversized glasses and some fake hair, I imagine, whereas mine's real. And let's say Sidon put that big ass yellow shirt on and stuffed it with pillows, put some ridiculous glasses on in a wig and started stuffing his face with food. And did it while he was a district attorney down there. And then I was commissioner and sat up there and I said, oh, he's been fired for doing that, but I'm gonna appoint him. How, how would you feel about that, Amber? Would you see the clear bias, especially from someone as the deputy DA that prosecuted me for bullshit fucking charges? While looking the other way as I get attacked in the streets of Lawrence and I come in here and tell you guys about it. You don't do a fucking thing either? Do you think you would still nominate him there, Amber? Do you think you'd nominate him still? And do you think you guys would find your courage when you're asked by LJ World, Lawrence Times to say who did it instead of, oh, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know who it was. It was Amber Sellers. It's been reported on, not, not by these losers, LJ World and Lawrence Times, but it's been reported on. So what do you say, Amber? Do you, do you see that bias in there? Sir, can you please stop cross chatter? And Sidon comes up here and wants to talk about, you know, how he wants to work with the community to right his wrongs.
I mean, this is how this shit works, man. This, this is these meetings on the regular basis, man. And every time we go up there, it's one more reason why we can't speak. I mean, that's basically it, Justin.
What? That they say we, that they shut us down on?
Yeah, it's, it's what, it doesn't matter. It's what, you could be talking about the most germane thing and they're still gonna try to shut you down. You could be talking about something that's, that's completely open and Amber is gonna point of order and try to shut you down just because she can't hear your voice.
Dude, there was, there was one meeting just a couple of months ago. I was in there speaking about the lawsuit that I'd filed against them. And, and also how much money had been spent on, they had spent on attorney's fees, which took an open records request by the newspaper to get. And as I was speaking about little John shut me down and said, that's not germane. I'm like, you gotta be shitting me. All you guys that takes an open record request to get the finances for is not germane to your guys' business?
Yep.
If that's germane, nothing's germane. I don't know, man.
Yep. Here, here's the very next week now after, after, so that was August 6th. This is August 13th. Now we got Amber here.
Slid out of that Josh Sidon thing pretty good, didn't you, Amber?
And, and pay attention here because this is the last time she's in the meeting for a while.
I know that there were a lot more than just one other vote. I don't think he had any votes other than yours, apparently. Never mind what I'm saying.
I apologize, guys. I
Cause I don't matter. Neither do the citizens that you insulted and harmed by even naming him to that board, even trying to get him on there. And you treated it as though it was just him, you know, you allowing him to make his case. Go ahead and do that quote one more time here. He applied. I'm giving him the opportunity to state his case as to why he should be appointed.
Guys, I want to pause that there because where that came from, her and I had a text and I called her out and I asked her, did you, you know, people are, people are saying that they think it was you because I called out another commissioner saying that I thought it was them. And they pointed the finger at Amber as well. So I got on a text with Amber and, and this is the text message that she sent me was that he applied and I'm gonna play that one more time here, that, that he applied and she's given him a chance to state his case. Now that's not the way a damn nominating process works. Doc, tell us how a nominating process is actually supposed to work.
There at the city?
Well, I mean, anywhere when you nominate somebody for a position like on the CPRB, on the community police review board, aren't you supposed to not be nominating somebody that you think's gonna do a good job?
Yeah, they're supposed to, as far as I could tell, they're supposed to come back with their one or two people that they were, that they want to put up as a nominee.
Well, not only that, but just think about the nominating process. If you're gonna nominate somebody for a position, aren't you saying that by, by just nominating them, your word, you're saying, I believe this is the best qualified person for this position?
Right. Yeah.
I mean, boom. But, but listen to what she said.
Dean's case as to why he should be appointed. He applied. I'm giving him the opportunity to state his case as to why he should be appointed. That's not a nomination. That's not a vote for the most qualified person, just like other people have been saying here. What was that? Was that a pat on the back and a career move for him?
Nothing.
If you want to address it, go ahead. I'll give you my time. You don't want to address it.
You guys noticing the face?
You didn't want to talk about it when the paper was asking.
That little head nod? Look at her.
If you want to address it, go ahead. I'll give you my time. You don't want to address it. You didn't want to talk about it when the paper was asking over and over and over. And then somehow they ignore the person that knew. Justin comes in last time, last week and talked about it.
Notice her faces, man. Look at her.
Where do you think he heard that from? Fighting for all those underprivileged people nominating a guy like Josh Sidon. How does that comport? And do you figure that you're gonna be able to make faces and trip me off tonight? Not gonna happen, Amber. So you can go ahead and keep making all the faces and nodding the head and doing all that. It's just fucking respectful is what it is. Just like your nomination of Sidon to be on the citizens' police review board. It's not like he was gonna help accomplish much because it really hasn't accomplished anything. Ms. Larson thought it'd accomplish something, but that was just a lie by the chief. It's incredible that you would do that. And that you would let it float out there for two weeks while the community is just going crazy trying to figure out who did it and why they did it. And you sitting up there acting, I mean, I'm glad I'm getting all this on video because it's gonna be good to slow it down and just show your responses. That's a
You know, I honest to God, you know, Justin, is that right there? Why she left the room is because I, I told, I said something to her about having it on video and she couldn't help herself.
Yeah, I think it's those things.
I mean, cause, cause literally this is the last meeting that she was in the room. Did you already speak here or are you right after me here? Yep, you're right after me here. Let's, let's go ahead and watch what you say.
Well, but hold on a second. So the, like you were saying right there, you know, calling her out with her own words.
Exactly.
I was saying earlier, it was from the horse's mouth. I mean, you don't get, you don't get any more rock solid evidence than that. And like I said earlier, Michael had actually gone to LJ World with that evidence and they were still, they were like, oh no, we need to verify a little bit more. Like what are you
They wanted me to provide, they, they wanted me to provide additional shit. And there was, I mean, how much more additional can I give you? You go to, go to Amber and ask her. And did she stonewall them?
Right. What, why? Yeah. What, what prevented them from, from doing any sort of fucking work on this, man? They're, they're the laziest. They're the laziest fucking sorry excuses for journalists you'll ever fucking see, man. They're terrible. Top to bottom. Lawhorn all the way down to whatever the fucking lowliest one of them. I don't remember her fucking name, but all of them.
Well, we'll get to, we'll get to K here in just a little bit. Let's hear what the doc had to say here at this very last meeting before Amber had to run to the back room and hide.
My name is Dr. Justin Speace. I'd like to talk about Amber Sellers's incompetence and her inexplicable nomination of Josh Sidon to the community police review board. Lawrence Times ordered an article on August 10th that's called Ex-Deputy DA Pleads His Case For Spot On Lawrence's Police Review Board. In it, the article says, he said during his time as a solo practitioner and then as deputy DA, he probably had quotes somewhere in the ballpark of probably 10 to 12 complaints unquote filed against him. And he did not think Speace's complaint would impair his ability to do his job. Quote, "I've never received any form of discipline. Anyone can file a complaint against anyone and it's just, it's kind of an occupational hazard," Sidon said. Obviously I walked myself right into this one. So Sidon's dismissive attitude there is trying to lead you to believe that 10 to 12 complaints is not a big deal for attorneys, but it is. Two of those complaints are serious ones. One of them is from me where he dressed up as me as the, when he was deputy district attorney. And the other one is from a case where he, 17-year-old raped a 10-year-old girl and Josh Sidon gave him a plea deal and on top of that treated the family like absolute shit. It was appalling. The way Sidon treated that family is the way that you can see the same attitude in the videos of me when I went in there those two times back in, in January and February and recorded my interactions with him. It's the same condescending attitude. Anyways, me and Michael from Lawrence Accountability been reporting on Sidon for months now. The local papers completely ignored it intentionally. And so I want to read some of the comments on some of the videos we posted. Disgraceful Amber Sellers. I'll tell you why. You recommend a man who is dismissed for unprofessional behavior against a citizen, a man who insulted judges, a man who
All right, guys. Here we go. I gotta pause this because maybe it's your fault, the viewers. Maybe it's the comments from you guys that Justin read in there that drove her to the back of her room. What do you think, Doc?
Power to the people. Heck yeah, man.
Let's hear, let's, let's hear these comments because maybe you guys actually did this. Cause don't forget, I mean, you guys, what happened in Elk County? We didn't, we didn't do a call for justice or anything. People were outraged by what they saw and they made a phone call. That's all it was. And what is wrong with that? That's all it was. And what is wrong with that?
There's great lessons to be learned in all this, man, is that people's voices actually do matter. There, there is a, there is a, um, defeatist mindset I hear oftentimes with people say, well, I don't go to the meetings because they don't listen to us and. And you know, I, you know, I agree. And I say, yeah, they, they usually don't. Oftentimes they go in there and they've already made up their mind on their votes and shit like that. But like this is an example, county commission is another. I read, I read comments in there, but, um, but if people actually would just go in there and, and, and use their voices more, it would have more of an impact. I, I'm, I am absolutely convinced of that. There's just not, there's just not enough people that do it consistently enough.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
A man who was so obsessed with hatred, he was strutting around playing the fool when he had a court case to prepare for, which had to be delayed because he wanted to be a jerk. A man with a record of losing important cases of the community needed one to see justice. I'd ask why? I'd hate to believe it's retaliatory personal spite. Sounds about right, doesn't it, Amber? This is in regard to that, uh, case of the 10 year old girl being raped. It's baffling to me that people acknowledge that this tragic event can put forward a man for a position requiring good judgment. Sidon has just displayed on numerous occasions, behavior that is so deplorable, he isn't fit to hold any post of responsibility. What the hell is going on in their head? There can be no excuse, especially as they tried to conceal their nominations and sneak this snake in under the radar. Yes, I mean you, Amber Sellers. Minion lady. Shame on you. Blatant self-serving. If he's such a great candidate, why do I, why try to cover it up? Your endorsement of a guy who cheated a 10 year old rape victim of justice by nominating him, you are endorsing his bad choices. That's you, Amber, champion of the people, right? Champion of the people. Wonder how many people, uh, Sidon put away unjustly? Do you care about them? No, you don't. You're a fucking phony. You're incompetent. You're fucking stupid too.
You see her faces again. I mean, that right there, Amber couldn't handle that. You could see all the faces she was making toward you. Just, you know. God, it irritates me when politicians act like that.
Next thing you know. Oh yeah. Well, she's uncomfortable. The next thing you know, she's dipping out. She's written a letter over to Lawrence Times and said, uh, publish this statement here of me blaming without actually naming these two guys because she's such a fucking coward. Uh, here, here's my statement as to why, uh, these two guys that I'm not gonna name, but we all know who it is, have caused me with their threats and their fucking abuse and all that shit. To go hide out in the, the fucking, the back room. And for all we know, that those first two times when she went back there. I thought she'd left the fucking building. I, I had no idea. She's went in the back room. I thought she was gone.
Exactly. And what she'd done is she'd gone back there and she disengaged from the meeting. And they had tried to pass it off at one time as though she, she was participating on Zoom.
Yeah.
And, and how is she participating on Zoom if she's not even there? You know, and she's not, she wasn't even logged in.
Yeah, they didn't put her up on the screen or anything. I could easily just put her up on the screen, but they didn't. So I really had thought she had left because you could leave out that room. You could leave the building right out that way. So.
Yep, yep. So she sent in this, this thing to the, uh, Lawrence Journal World and. Lawrence City Commissioner Amber Sellers says she will no longer attempt, no longer attend the meetings during general public comment citing dangerous and disruptive behavior. Uh, this was on September 6th.
Okay.
So this was after that August 20th meeting where you had, you know. Yeah.
We took her to task.
Exactly.
Accountability, yeah.
It, it, it taking a politician to task and holding them accountable for the things that they've said, the things that they've done. And you know, she did not like hearing the public's criticism.
That, that impacts the community.
Exactly. Now down here, she's got a Facebook post that she made. And I think I can bring this over here. Let's do this. She put up this letter. Where she just cried, all me, all me. You know, addressing my decision to participate in general public comment. Let me make this big. I don't know if it helps you guys see it. But she says, as a public servant, I believe in the power of discourse and the importance of compute, community engagement. The opportunity for residents, residents to voice their opinions or concern is a cornerstone. However, recent events have compelled me to reconsider how I participate in these discussions, specifically general public comment. You see, it wasn't enough that they moved general public comment to the end of the meeting and tried to wear everybody out so they wouldn't be able to hang in till the end. But she decides to go ahead and say, today I'm deciding to engage from an alternative location. Now, the reality is, is like we said, Doc, she didn't engage from an alternative location. She went in the back room and hid out.
Well, she didn't participate either. She says, I'm gonna participate in a different location. It's like, bitch, you ain't participate.
Right. If you notice the votes to adjourn at the end, they're all four zero for several weeks.
Yep. So, so what happens is after the, the. The meeting concludes up to the general public comment portion of it, they, they pause the meeting and let people get up and leave the room. And then they also stopped recording the meeting of that, at that point. So the entire meeting has been recorded up until general public comment. They, they voted months ago to no longer record it and broadcast it.
Right.
And they also moved it to the end of the meeting, which my, as Michael said, is a huge deterrent for people to wait it out to get there. Cause these, these meetings are, they're marathons. They're like five, six hours long. Anyway, so when they, when they paused the meeting, that's when Amber Sellers would get up, uh, from the room and walk to walk out of the room. And that would leave four commissioners up there. And it was always just the kind of an interesting thing because if she could do it, then they, they all could do it in theory. And so then what you're left with is your. Fucking constituents sitting there talking to a blank fucking room. I mean, in theory they could do that. And so, but she would go and she'd disappear. I mean, they, they could, they could unquorum themselves out of a meeting is what they could end up doing, I think, but, um.
Well, and what's she doing in the back room? Is she just watching or is she back there eating? I got my money on food. I mean, I just gotta say.
She's eating. I bet she's eating too. And it'd be a simple fix. All she'd have to do is just pull up the Zoom link and, and be on it.
She'd be all getting done. She'd be ready to go.
Yeah, that would let everybody know what she's doing. So I mean, it really looks like she left and, and you know. When, when she issued that statement there, and then of course the papers here reported on it as well. So at, at that point she stopped attending the general public comment. And there of course have been some really s, serious issues and concerns that citizens went there and spoke on. Um, there, there was even a Kansas State Senator, Marcy Francisco, who's, who stayed and spoke. And Amber still, no respect given to any of those people. She still was leaving. They, they had. You know, groups in there that were advocating for certain causes like homeless issues and, and whatnot. And Amber still was basically giving them the fucking finger as she walked out and then went and sat in the back room saying, I don't want to listen to what you guys said. Thanks for sitting here for five hours and listening to our fucking bullshit, but, uh, I'm not gonna listen to you guys. See ya. That's the message she's given. And what, what, what is really, you know, the, the thing about this for me is that I see something like that and. How that doesn't make everybody there in Lawrence want to vote her out. I, I have no idea, but my guess is Lawrence will still vote her back in, even though they don't give a fuck about their voices. It's truly an amazing thing there in Lawrence.
Well, you know, and if you go back and you look at that Facebook post that I just had up, it's at amber sellers for commission dot co, uh, at Facebook. But she, she got, I think, one like on each picture. So it's not like a lot of people were supporting that.
Well, that's the thing. Like if you go, you can see, um, you know, the, the comments on, on today's LJ World article, there, there's a lot of people that, um. Are, are voicing their concerns that they don't like what Amber Sellers is doing. But in the larger scheme of Lawrence, there's so many stupid liberals there that they will keep voting her back. It will not matter that they don't want to. To, uh, that she doesn't want to hear them. It, it doesn't matter.
And the, the issue is, is you can't silence free speech and, and that's what we're seeing happening with Gillette down in Elk County. We're seeing that with that Alexander Ball judge down in Pima County, uh, Arizona. We're seeing the same thing here with all this shit that they keep, kept trying at the different meetings that we've gone to, including the library. Brad Allen at the library has just blown my mind. With some of the shit that he's come up with. He wasn't even on my radar until, until that whole thing happened where, oh, wow.
I know it's wild, man. It's truly wild. It, it's, it's the, one of those things that if we weren't recording it, people wouldn't even believe it. They'd be like, oh yeah, really? That's what's happening? Okay.
No, and, and, and that's why, you know, I gotta be honest, as much as I criticize the Lawrence Times, I am glad they put these videos up because people actually do get to see this stuff. Um, now this is the August 20th meeting, the August, what's, what's that?
Well, Lawrence Times is doing the bare minimum here. I give them credit.
Oh, yeah.
As well, but they.
Let's not start, let, let's not start bagging on them. They, they got a video up here we can use, so.
Well, they should have a reporter in there themselves doing this, but.
Yeah, fair enough. Um, but this is August 20th and you'll notice that Amber's not there anymore.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Who's saying go ahead?
I'm sorry. Did you want me to speak or are you gonna let?
Julie, you can hold off for a second. I, I believe there's somebody here in here who wants it.
My name is Dr. Justin Spees. Two weeks ago, I, uh, came in here during general public comment and I spoke, uh, after two speakers who specifically mentioned the Community Police Review Board. Uh, one of them was Josh Sidon himself. The other was Michael Irby there and he spoke right before me. And when I came up to speak, I, uh, said that Amber Sellers had met, had nominated Josh Sidon to that board. And then Amber Sellers called a point of order and said that I couldn't talk about that. And I said, well, why can't I, why am I not allowed to talk about it when Michael just talked about it? Uh, and then you Bart, uh, proceeded to give me a warning and say I had to stop talking about that. Uh, a couple of days later, uh, someone emailed you guys on August 9th and in part they said. It's a shameful display at the last city commission meeting. Shame on you, Amber Sellers. Your subterfuge to hide your recommendation didn't work despite.
Yeah.
Yeah. What I, what I just said there, you know, I explained how you and Sidon had both spoken about that. And then I went up and spoke, basically I'm, you know, I'm recap.
That's what we all just saw.
What we all just saw. And, and, and the part that is just. You know, it's just inexplicable by the papers there is that tho, those are, that, those are facts. I was not allowed to speak about a similar topic that two other people were allowed to, but they don't report on it.
No, they didn't. They didn't say a peep about that. And you, you got a good point there because you were, you were silenced. And, and given a warning, et cetera, and nobody reported it.
Right. You, you don't need to be a lawyer. They, they'll fall back and be like, well, we're not lawyers. You don't need to be a lawyer to look at that and go, well, you know what? They did allow two people to speak on something. Then when he spoke, they didn't let him. They do not report on it. Even in the fucking article that they wrote today about Sellers fucking hiding again or whatever. They still are framing it as we are suing because we're not allowed to say fucking mean things to them. No, it's about fairness, you dipshits. And, and this is an example of the unequal protection that's happening there. Where if somebody gets to talk about a topic and another person doesn't get to, you don't need a fucking law degree to see that that's not fucking right. But they won't report on it and they won't report on it because they don't fucking like me. And, and also because they, they are just like bootlickers for the city government. It's, it, it's.
Well, and you know, Chad Lawhorn has to carry that water else he loses his access and then his paper becomes irrelevant.
So it's nothing but propaganda and everybody that subscribes to that in Lawrence that becomes aware of that and still pays for that garbage, well, you're a fucking moron. You, you're getting fed fucking half truths and lies left and right.
Well, it definitely half truths. You know, they, they try not to print just outright lies, but you know, the, the politicians do get some half truths in there that do come across as lies. Now, the, the, the thing about this one here though, is you're pointing out everything and. Bart, look at him. He can't take it. He's, he's doing the same thing Amber does with his voices. In his head and making him move around and everything. And you'll see when we get to the last video that I'm gonna show you tonight. Just how antsy this sucker can actually get when he's actually put on the spot.
By your attempts to conceal it. What motivation here? Nothing acceptable. I was horrified. I thought better of you. And shame on you, mayor, trying to silence someone raising it, which is in reference to me. You show contempt for free speech, a current position you've demonstrated constantly of late. Uh, the next day, Lisa Larson there responded in part by saying, quote, the mayor only interjected when the speaker verbally attacked a city commissioner and wouldn't follow rules of decorum. So a question for you there, lying Lisa Larson. The mayor only interjected when the speaker verbally attacked someone. So. The way that it happened is I said, Amber Sellers, you nominated Josh Sidon and she called a point of order and said that I couldn't talk about it. And so the mayor only interjected at that point. I hadn't said anything about Amber Sellers. Uh, I gave the example of how she would feel if, uh, Josh Sidon was mocking her and put on a big old yellow shirt. She's wearing a big old yellow shirt. Stuffed it with pillows, put in a, put on her glasses. That came after the mayor interjected. So you're lying, you're full of shit. Uh, what verbal attack did I have on a commissioner? What verbal attack is that? She's a fat ass.
Man, I'm sorry.
Well, you know.
That's why she's not in the room anymore. It had nothing to do with anything else.
Well, yep. The example I was given was, you know, Sidon dressed up just like me. So if you're gonna dress up like, like Amber Sellers, you, you have to do all of that stuff. That, that's part of who she is. You know what I mean?
And you know, the reality is guys, eh, I, this is free speech, man. This is America. Freedom is fucking scary. Get deal, you know, get used to it, deal with it. You know, get over it.
The other, yeah, exactly. Get over it. The other thing along those lines and the, and the paper did that today as well as, is they, they try to, they, they frame this as tho, those. Those helpless commissioners up there are being verbally attacked by me. And they even bring up an example of the county administrator who doesn't work for the city. She, she's a county administrator. Um, her name is Sarah Plinsky and she's a big woman as well. And she has orchestrated unlawful arrests on me at the county commission meetings. And, uh, at one meeting I, I called after the arrest, I called her a fat ass while I, while I was speaking. And, and the assistant county attorney, she almost fell out of her chair. And, and I think it was reported on as well that I had, had done that. But, but my, but the point I'm trying to make here is what gets lost in all this is. Sarah Plinsky had me unlawfully arrested. That fucking damages fucking reputation. It hits financially. Fucking Amber Sellers appointed Josh Sidon, a guy that like I just laid it all out. He fucking dressed up as me. He did this, he did that. He didn't prosecute when he should have. He prosecuted me when he shouldn't have. And, and they're the fucking victims because I said they're fucking fat asses?
No, man, it's, dude, it's just like I told Gillette. You called me a criminal. I'll call you a bitch if I want to.
Right, right. If they wouldn't have done that shit to me, I'm not just going in there and calling him a fat ass. Let, let's look at who's the real fucking victim in all this. It's the guy that got fucking kidnapped and fucking battered by the police for no fucking reason at the order of Sarah Plinsky. It's the fucking, uh, guy that has to sit there and watch one of the city commissioners think it's okay to nominate some guy. Like who is the actual fucking victim here, papers? Let's keep things in perspective.
Right?
Cause if that shit would have happened to any one of these soft ass liberals, man, they'd be fucked. They'd just be done for. But they act like being called a fat ass is worse than what they've done to me. It's, it's.
You're watching, you're watching what it does. And, and I hate saying this because man, again, we gotta mention to people that you and I come from different backgrounds. I am more left leaning. And you know, it kind of grinds on me when, when Justin takes this compassing liberal view because I always considered myself as a. Liberal person as far as social policy and things like that. But you know, when we're talking about lip tard and liberal, and I'm talking about this, everybody's gotta be included. You know, we've got to make sure that everybody has an even playing field, no matter what disadvantage that's gotta do to somebody else. And, and you know. I get it that there's disadvantage going on, but you can't. Disadvantage somebody to give somebody else an advantage. You can't try to level the playing field like that. And that's what happens in a lot of times here. And, and what they do is they take out their frustrations with the fact that they can't sit there and listen to us. They can't sit there and listen to us.
Well, it's, it's that woke, it's that woke ideology.
Yeah, they can't sit there and listen to the criticism. They can't take the criticism that they levy out to everybody else. Dude, I get beat the fuck up online by some people. Okay, whatever. You don't like me, move on.
They think their shit don't stink. And so they'll sit there and listen all day long to people saying nice things about them. But a second, somebody comes in and has any kind of criticism that they don't want to hear and it's presented in a way they don't like. They'll either shut them down, have them arrested, leave the fucking room themselves. They, they just cannot tolerate that shit.
Exactly. Now this is the, uh, September 3rd meeting that's on the screen here and you'll notice that Amber's not over there. Again, she's left the meeting, so she's not gonna come in and join us. Um, they're gonna do some public comment here. This one's kind of long. I'm not gonna show a whole bunch of it.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and bring this back. She leaves the room, I always, I'm always calling out, don't forget the flush.
Yeah. I think that's been in a couple of videos. I, I know the reason this one is, is because you notice here, uh, they kept the view on just one angle.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
You know, well. You know, what's that do? I, I don't know. People don't get a whole lot out of that, but that's the entire public comment that they've kept just on that one angle. So you can't really get a, a, an idea of what people are saying or what people are doing in there at the time. You can hear it. That's it.
Yeah. I mean, just, just imagine if you needed to be able to see the speaker while they're speaking to, to understand what's going on in the meeting. You can't do that with this here.
Right. Now this one is the next one. This is September 10th. Now. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit on this one because I got charges out of this one and this one kind of ticked me off. And so I want to rehab it because we haven't really, really talked about this one much, Doc. I mean, I put out my own little thing showing what happened, but Bart invited public comment and then had me, had me taken out and trespassed. And this is again, Amber's not in the room.
So, um. Public comment time?
And that clown hat there, that jester's hat, that's something I got from Renaissance Festival a number of years ago, man. I've had that thing. And yeah, that clown hat there, that jester's hat, that's something I got from Renaissance Festival a number of years ago, man. I've had that thing for years. And I had decided that since Amber was gonna turn this into a clown show and leave the room. When she was getting up, leaving the room, I would, let's get the clown show going and I would put on the hat. So here we go. You know, that, that's the whole story behind the hat.
Side conversations while folks are speaking, please. Um, sir.
Um.
Does that include you? Can you hold all your damn side conversations while I'm talking tonight, Bart? Since we're in a goddamn clown show here.
Now let me ask everybody right now, are, are we in public comment? E- everybody, if you think that we're in public comment right now and that I'm in my three minutes, put a one in the chat, please. This, this is important. I want to get your opinion on this. Let me, let me go back and we're gonna just show this again here. Because if you think that I'm in public comment right now and talking as a part of my three minutes, put a one in the chat.
Has sold off all side conversations while folks are speaking, please. Um, sir. Does that include you? Can you hold all your damn side conversations while I'm talking tonight, Bart? Since we're in a goddamn clown show here. How come you can't make your commissioner stay out here? You're not a strong mayor, Bart.
How about it, guys? Am I in my public comment time right now? My three minutes? Look how long I've been talking there. Nobody's said a word. You, there's a couple of you there that really you don't think I'm in my, my three minutes right now? You may just be joshing because you know what happens here. Watch what happens, guys. You're gonna love this.
Sir, Mayor Littleman. Mayor Littleman. I think that's what we ought to call him now.
If you could make it.
Sir, sir, this is my time, my time. Stop it.
Don't.
And me, shh. You're being disruptive and I'm trying to run an orderly meeting. This is your warning. You are being disruptive. You are talking over me.
And it's just having a problem with my. Who's talking over who there, Justin?
That, that's the thing. These, these commissions, they have to follow the rules that they impose. So, so on, on the citizen. So if we're not allowed to interrupt somebody during their three minutes of speaking. They certainly aren't allowed to either, but look at what they do. They interrupt you and then have the audacity, the nerve to say, well, you're now disrupting me as I speak over you. But two things to point out on this is, well, three things. He invites Michael up there. Uh, sir, and then you, you can't see it on this, but Michael has recordings. He gestures up for him to come up there. Michael speaks for like, what is it like 13 or 14 or 17 seconds or like that before Little John says anything. And what Little John says is. Sir, make it germane to the business of the city.
He says to the subject. I think he says to the subject. Let's go back and listen to it.
Those are all things that are saying general public comment is going on. Otherwise he'd be like, sir, we haven't started general public comment. You're disrupting the meeting. He did not say that at all.
Yep. But the point of making with this is, you know, Amber has run out of the meeting. And she has run out because of the words that we say. And now it's not enough that she's run out. Now we've got to be criminalized as well. For the words that we say. Let's, let's see exactly what was said here. Pay attention to what Bart says when he said, wh- when he says, can you keep it? Sir, can you keep it? And pay attention.
Has sold off all side conversations while folks are speaking, please. Um, sir. Does that include you? Can you hold all your damn side conversations while I'm talking tonight, Bart? Since we're in a goddamn clown show here. How come you can't make your commissioner stay out here? You're not a strong mayor, Bart. Sir, Mayor Littleman. Mayor Littleman. I think that's what we ought to call him now. If you could.
Sir, sir, this is my time, my time. He said, make it germane to the city.
Which is in reference to general public comment rule that they have. They're about their germane standard.
Well, and how's the mayor not able to keep his commissioners at quorum? Not a, a, an issue for the city, wouldn't you think?
Right, exactly. Yeah. If you got one that's leaving, then that's definitely the, the business of the city. It.
Yeah.
That's that's objectivity. That's that subjectivity that they get to wield up there.
Yeah. And these cops actually, actually go through with it.
My vocal words of speech is being disruptive and trying to run an orderly meeting while he's talking over me. If you could please remove the gentleman, I would appreciate it. And we will take a recess. The words that they're saying, thank you. Five minutes.
And see that one right there? That's the deputy chief, the guy closest to us, the short bald one. That's the deputy chief of police.
Yeah.
And there's no sound here because the city has basically cut it, but you're seeing the audio. We don't need to play this because you can see it on another place. I think I put it up on my channel.
Um, so, so this is a really, this was a wild meeting because uh, Michael does get trespassed from there. So he, he's removed by the police out of there and they're actually out those doors, out the, out the back of the building there standing, talking. And I go back in there um, to speak during general public comment. And that's the one I mentioned earlier where I was sitting up there and I was mentioning the lawsuit that I had.
Mm-hmm.
Little John stopped me as well and said I wasn't being germane. And I'm like, what are you talking about? And I explain it. And then he says, I'm being a disruption. And then I'm, I'm gonna, he, he asked the police to have me removed again. And I say, I'm not fucking leaving. Go fuck yourself. And I go, sit down. And all the fucking cops there like lurking around me and Bart like pulls them back. Like, no, actually, we're not gonna, we're not gonna exit him now. And they all like stand down. It's like.
Right.
Guys, what the fuck is going on here? It's just words, guys.
Well, and that's the thing. The words are just too much for them.
Yeah, n- none of it's reported. Of course, your, your removal was reported, but none of that other stuff is reported and not, not.
Well, my removal, sure, it makes news because they think it makes me look bad. But the problem is, is they put it in the paper and it's actually showing the police violating rights is what's going on.
Yeah, 100%. And, and that should be, that should be the newspaper's job that's showing that. But they, they are completely entirely 100% silent. On any kind of hint or whiff of any kind of violation happening down there. They haven't even brought it up.
Well, that's, that's, that's not their thing. They're not interested in reporting the other side of the narrative. You know, they're only interested in that one side that serves their purpose. So August 1st.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead. August 1st, you can see her chair down here in the, in the, in the spot right here. It's empty. So she's not there. And uh, you know, we get into public comment. And this was a long one where a lot of uh homeless advocates and other people had come in because of the Amtrak sweep that was happening. And so you had a ton of people speaking that went just one after another. And these are times where they get stuck in their chairs forever. And now you, was, was this one where you and I were both there, Justin? Or did we skip? Nope, here we are. There's you. I guess this was right up front.
It's gonna be a lift because I'm gonna call all of you in.
There you go.
Now on remand, the Ninth Circuit must determine whether the school board trustees in this case spoke on behalf of the government or not. Now, the reality is it comes down on whether you speak on behalf of the government. The city's Facebook page does that. You are right now in.
And that was about me being blocked from their Facebook page preemptively. I'd never even been on it. And then here's Justin speaking.
Been arrested. That's all I'm saying.
Well, you had mentioned all these lawsuits. In the week before, I'd just been told I couldn't speak about a lawsuit. I think this is what happens here.
Right.
I think that's this meeting.
Guys, what is going on?
Yep, it is.
Why was Michael just allowed to read two and a half minutes of lawsuits? And two weeks ago, I sat here at this podium. And was reading about my lawsuit against you guys, against the city, against you as the commission and against two of the, the mayors. And I was within that lawsuit was pointing out that uh, it's impossible to know what germane means around here because of your inconsistencies. And I was pointing that out and Bart, you stopped me and said that that wasn't germane. And then when I tried to defend that by saying, what do you, how could that possibly not be germane, Bart? It's a lawsuit about you guys. You said that I was now being a disruption and you had, you were ordering the police to remove me. Michael just read two and a half minutes of lawsuits that don't even concern you guys. None of those relate to the city whatsoever. And he was allowed to sit there and talk. What the hell's going on? This, I'm, this is a serious question. I wish the city attorneys wouldn't have packed up and left. Maybe they could give me an answer. How in the world am I supposed to know what germane means when I'm reading about a lawsuit that I filed against you guys, making it germane to you? You're using taxpayer money to, to defend it. And you're telling me that's not germane and then ordering the police to have me arrested. And then you, uh, and then at the last second, you changed your mind. You did that two weeks to me in a row. We're gonna have the police remove me under, under threat of arrest.
Because I want to point out, they keep having the police remove under threat of arrest. And you know, when they do this, they charge you with trespassing. And that, that's what I got charged with on September 10th was trespassing. So I was in effect trespassed from city hall, the whole grounds. I had to leave, period. Not just from the meeting, the whole grounds. And all they could say was. What? I wasn't being germane to the city enough for Bart?
Which then they automatically flip that into a disruption.
Right, but they didn't charge me with disrupting.
Nope.
They charged me with trespassing.
Yep.
And, and quite honestly, you know, as you pointed out in your video about it. You know, they charged me with trespassing after they gave me the impression they were going in the back room and gonna come out with a decision whether I was actually under threat of arrest or not.
Exactly. They, they.
Cause I told them if I was under threat of arrest, I would leave. And they never said that. And see, that's the other thing.
They weren't straight up with.
No, not at all. Not at all. But this is, this is just one more time where they have broken their own policy when they try to enforce it. They enforce it one way against one person, the next way against the next person. All they know is they want it their way, regardless of how it goes. So it ends up being nothing but inconsistent.
Nothing but inconsistent. And, and, and what, you know, is so maddening about this is that, that. The, the papers not reporting on this. Once again, like what I'm talking about there is a, is a matter of fact, straight up example of. You allowed them to talk about, you allowed him to talk about lawsuits, but you didn't allow me. And the papers, they, they are unconcerned about it whatsoever. And the reason why I keep harping on the papers is because in the article today, they, they wrote about how. Well, me and Michael, our lawsuits are about, well, we're not allowed to go in there and cuss and say mean, mean things to them. It's like, that's not true. It has to do with things like this example right here of I'm calling for fairness there LJ World, calling for fairness, not to go in there and be able to. Scream obscenities at these people as, as you're trying to make it out to be. These are simple examples. They're called comparators. Which is leads to viewpoint discrimination. You can point out and say, you're talking about fucking lawsuits here and you're allowing it. But when I talk about lawsuits, not even just in general, but against the city, you're telling me that it's not germane. And the papers are just like, yeah, that all sounds fine to me. I don't see any issue with that whatsoever.
Well, they all say, well, we're not lawyers and they can't recognize the inconsistencies. They don't under, I mean. How hard is it to see that they treat people differently in there depending on who they are? And what they don't realize, it's not just an inconsistency. It becomes what you just called a comparator. And when you have a comparator, that's a legal term for all you people that judges are able to look at and say, well, and now we're able to say, you were inconsistent. Comparator is basically a legal word for an inconsistency.
Eh, how people are, are treated. Are, are they treating people uh, the same or, or not? So i- it's one thing to say, well, you didn't allow me to talk about lawsuits. But it's another thing to say, well, you didn't allow me to talk about lawsuits when you allowed other people to talk about lawsuits. And I think it's another thing to say. You didn't allow me to talk about a lawsuit against you guys when you allowed other people to talk about lawsuits that didn't have anything to do with you guys.
You know, I'm gonna point tax comment here. I haven't read a newspaper or watched mainstream news since the scandemic. Um, I can't just, I can't disagree with that, man, because uh, mainstream news has just gotten so shitty.
And I agree with that. And, and I'm not, I'm not trying to advocate that people need to go and do that. I, I'm trying to say to, to people in Lawrence that read LJ World and slurp up the bullshit. That they need to stop doing that. They need to stop wasting their money on that stuff. It, these are dishonest, disingenuous fucking people. They, Chad Lawhorn has an axe to grind against me and Michael and you can see him fucking doing it in the papers, man. And, and that's, that's all this comes down to. An axe to grind and bootlickers.
Well, he doesn't like being called out because we both repeatedly called him out for his biases and called out his reporters. I mean, look at the time when. Us and Chris Condi were out there, where the I am cone, this is California video game.
Yeah.
You know, we didn't say the stupid shit. They did, you know?
And, and the re- and the reason why I think this is so newsworthy and, and is, is deserving of the community's attention is that. I, I get it that people don't like me there and they're getting lumped in with me as well. I get it. People don't like me. Um, so they're probably okay with it because they don't like me, but it can and will happen to you motherfuckers as well. That's the point I'm trying to make in all this shit.
Yeah, I can't ever forget the night that Bart shut down Courtney. You know, when you, you know, that is really one of those moments where. You know, you heard Doc say over and over, it can happen to you. You think it won't. And I'm sure Courtney never had a clue that she would ever, ever be shut down at a city commission meeting, not Courtney Shipley. But sure enough, Bart did and, and.
And she didn't like it. She didn't like it. She turned into her little catty self right away. I don't know, you know, like.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. She was mad as hell.
I'll tell you what, it is not a fucking good feeling, man. It is, it is a terrible feeling. And to have it happen repeatedly, consistently over years is an awful feeling. It's like. You, you have no fucking voice. And what makes it all even worse for me is that I, I was in the fucking military and defended this, these fucking right, these rights of people, these fucking people here.
Night, Brandon.
And, and, and.
Brandon's taking off, man. Brandon Mitchell is freaking everywhere, man. I don't know how many screens that guy keeps open, but he's in every damn livestream I've ever in.
He is. He's everywhere, man. He really is.
But so we got October 7th first here. She's not in the meeting. And then I've looked ahead. We've got October 15th. She's not in the meeting. And that's uh, this one here. And you and I had, had not gone to a couple of these, right?
Yep, that's right. In November.
There's. Okay, so there we are in October. You and I are there in October.
Yeah.
And so.
Summer.
So it's November that you think that, that we weren't there. And see, this is what gets Amber back in the room is she thinks that we're done.
Stephen Watts.
Yep. So this is the one where it's just Stephen Watts and he's the only one that comes. And watch, watch here. He's bitching too.
I attended the via Zoom, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting. Looks like you're done talking, so. Wow. Disturbances from once again webinar subjugation. Um. Why is this group allowing an interloper deciding, uh, participating in the decision-making process with respect to the Affordable Housing Advisory Board?
Okay, you know, I gotta say, Stephen and I have had our differences and he's not the easiest guy to get along with, but man. He gives them hell, just like we do. He gives them hell.
He was even at the library, man. He even came to the library after our video.
So.
And, and I'm sure Stephen Watts is a, is a far left liberal as well.
Yeah, he, and he, he's a prior government service, I think is what he did, but, but he gives some help.
That meeting, it was being as civil as civil can be. Yes, I was pushing the button to raise my hand to speak. And then. I'm texting inside that meeting, asking questions, and then I'm ejected electronically. I went to the meeting physically, risking my personal health to go to the meeting. Only to find that the public cannot opine on. Affordable Housing Advisory Board matters, other than the blanket. Public input process. You can't talk about. What they're looking at. I have filed certain paperwork and I need the assistance of you, the town commission, to effectuate it. I will not be discriminated against because I am an old white man. And yet that is what occurred in that meeting. There was nobody there but me. And I was ejected electronically. When I went to the meeting physically. I was then told, get the hell out of here or we're gonna have your ass arrested. This is what's gonna happen.
That's, that's what I wanted to get to. He, they even threatened with him with arrest if he didn't leave a meeting. Just because they didn't want him there.
When did that happen?
Uh, that was the affordable housing meeting, uh, looks like in probably in October. This is November 5th when he spoke and neither one of us went to this meeting. And not, and so it was a short meeting and his was the only comment. You can see that it just, it goes through that. I guess, uh. Yeah, this is uh, Jer- uh, Jason Hepler, I think that spoke. Um, but it was just the two of them and there was nobody in the room. That's why it went so quick. And so that was Amber wasn't there, right? So she, she's not there in that meeting. And then this is the next one. This is gonna be November 12th. She's not in the room. And you and I, I don't think we were here on this one, were we? There's Chris Flowers. And then you got him again. That's just the two of them. So there's two meetings that you and I didn't go to there.
So you get, you could almost, you could almost visualize Amber like checking to see if the coast is clear. I think it's safe to come out now. I'm gonna come out of the meeting now.
Right. I'm, 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 I'm ready. I'm ready. But, but guess what?
So bad.
Sorry, Amber. Look at her. She's in the room again.
Yeah.
Hey, you can see her over there in the corner and here's, here's Doc and I, boy. We just, two meetings? Is that all it took? We just had to wait her out for two meetings?
Yep, two meetings. And then also it's been uh, two meetings that we've been back. And now that article came out and she's fucking done again.
All right. So this is the one, and since we mentioned the library, this is actually a good, good one to watch because this is where we talked about the library. And the reason the. And the reason the library is germane to the city is because the mayor sits on the library board. He has a vote there. And so this was Little John who made these stupid votes with the library to try to limit. They, they tried to tell us, what would that, what did that thing say? This is the rules for your first amendment in the library?
Free speech activities. Yeah, that, that the library can define your uh, your free speech in, inside the library.
Come on, how audacious are you gonna be to try to define free speech better than our founding fathers did?
Right, exactly. And, and the way, the way that this is set up is that um. That vote at the library on that policy was like a week before this meeting. And then Bart was the mayor still, but at this meeting here, this week, that week there. They voted in a new mayor. So that's why it says he's the mayor, but the mayor actually was Little John and Little John's the one that voted at the library meeting for that policy.
Right. And that, that policy failed. You guys can check out the videos, man. We, we, Justin went in there like immediately. And challenged it several different ways and they just don't know what to do. And the police just finally gave up, but here you go. Let's, listen.
Members of the public will be limited to three minutes per.
Now we've got a new mayor. And I, you know, here, hold on just a second because I honestly, I honestly thought this was a control issue with Bart that he, that he wasn't able to. Get Amber to stay on the stage, you know? And maybe I'm wrong about the, the control that a mayor should have. I think the mayor should be able to draw a quorum, but I guess they can't here. Because they're all just commissioners taking turns as mayor like Chris says. But uh, I mistakenly thought that with the new mayor that she was coming back because she didn't have the sway with him to get away with it maybe. Maybe she had the sway with Bart. She didn't have the sway with Mike to not call her out. I don't know.
Yeah, I guess not since she's leaving again.
Well, that's obviously not the case, but that was my mistaken understanding. Again, dude, I'm a tow truck driver, man. I'm not a city commissioner. I'm a, I'm a tow truck driver and I'm a citizen who has issues that he sees in the city and is trying to bring them to the city commissioners who are the fucking professionals. And they just try to shut us down and have us arrested. So what the hell else am I supposed to think, you know? But damn, you know, let's, let's talk about the library thing here.
Sticking around this time, Amber. My name's Dr. Justin Spees. One uh position that the mayor serves on is on the library board. And this last Monday, the library uh voted on, or held a special meeting to vote on a free speech. Activities policy that they're enacting and uh Bart Littlejohn was the mayor at that time. And he voted to approve this policy that got approved and it says here. This policy divine, defines a visitor's free speech rights on the library campus, which is interesting because I thought the constitution went ahead and defined that for us. And so in here they say, in their definitions, they say free speech activities include, but are not limited to holding or carrying signs, protesting. Using expressive conduct or speech, distributing literature, acting as a public speaker, panhandling. And requesting signatures, donations, contributions. And in their regulations, they maintain the library is a limited public forum. And therefore the library will not permit free speech activities inside the library that would interfere with study and enjoyment of visitors of the library. So Bart, I got some questions for you. How, how is that policy, how's that policy constitutional? So immediately after that meeting, I went and I stood in the library holding a sheet of paper with some words on it and was right away. Told that I, I couldn't do that because I was interfering with the uh business of the library there. And then I had the police called on me who uh refused to enforce their policy. The same thing happened the next day. I'm standing in there with a sheet of paper with some words on it. Got the police called on me. The police uh declined to uh. Remove me from the building. And then a few days after that, another citizen here in town walked around with a sheet of paper and he didn't get the police called on him. But I went walking in there ninety minutes after he had gone in there. With a blank piece of cardboard. With nothing on it and got the police called on me once again. Standing there with a blank piece of cardboard. Is considered interfering with the library worthy.
Dude, I gotta pause that because. I, I, I could, I gotta tell everybody, working with Dr. Spees. This is a guy. Who can figure out how to. Compare and make a comparison. That people don't even see coming at them. And, and he didn't tell me that he was gonna come in with a blank. It was a double sided white piece of cardboard that had nothing on it. Nothing at all. And as, as you're gonna hear him say, somebody else had been in the light. We didn't even know he was gonna be there, but somebody else had been in the library walking around for like. What, what we decide up Doc, an hour and a half, I think David. Ninety-five minutes. He was walking around with a sign, a, a piece of paper with words on it that he's held up. And this is after Doc has gone in there a couple of times and done this. And had all the police show up and everything and the police declined to do anything. And it's just a big harassment schedule, you know? And uh actually had the library director, you could hear him yelling, I want harassment charges. So when the guy goes in there for an hour and a half, holding that piece of paper with Doc shows up with a blank white sign. They just assumed it had something on it, that it was objectionable. They didn't even look. They saw. The dude with the hat and the dreads carrying something made of refined wood product, whether it be paper. Cardboard or otherwise. And they decided that it was time to call the police. Cause you had a guy in there for, I, I'll just let Doc tell it. I'll just.
People with guns, you guys are definitely afraid of the police. People with guns that would inflict violence on me to remove me from a building for standing there with a. Piece of cardboard with nothing on it. Can you explain to me how that's not discrimination, Bart? You have uh, one gentleman goes in there with a piece of paper with words on it. And doesn't get the police called on him. I stand there silently as well with a piece of paper with words on it and get the uh, get the police called on me. Luckily, right now the police recognize that that's called a constitutionally protected activity. And recognize that that would be an unlawful arrest if they were to remove me from there. So can you, can you explain that to me there, Bart? Also, can you explain to me how the library is able to do their pride? Signs in there, but yet I can't stand with a sheet of paper with words on it?
Hey, Michael, one thing I want to point out before you uh start speaking here. Where you were saying there about uh me uh finding the comparators and, and the signs and stuff like that. What do I always say to you though, when you, when you bring that up?
They always pull a bad card, man.
Well, they pull, they pull, yeah, they pull a bad card. That's one thing, but no, I say like all, all that stuff. It, it doesn't just, it doesn't just come to me. Every time I go to one of these things, I pray for words and wisdom from Jesus and Jesus promises us words and wisdom. So every time I ask for it, Jesus always comes through. And so anytime I get an idea like that, it's, it's not coming from me.
Well, he, he, you didn't get any words this time, but you got wisdom. That was for sure.
Exactly, which I don't have on my own. I don't have, so.
Oh man, it was just great. It was just great that you walked in with a blank piece of cardboard and they tripped out. Uh, I just, I wouldn't have imagined that. And when I saw it, like I say, I was shocked. I was surprised.
Glad I get to follow on that one because everything he said is true. I filmed it. Guy walked around the library for. Ninety, I think we figured it up to be ninety-seven minutes with a sign, piece of paper with words on it. No cops were called. Five minutes after he walked in the door. Cops called. It's a bad look, Bart. By the way, Amber has the tenor in here improved enough for you. Be back with us. I want to get back to the library because he made another good point because the cops stood there this last time. And literally called it themselves a constitutionally protected activity. You voted for it, man. It was your, you know, you're the mayor that's on that board. I hope Mr. Dever can help them correct that mess. You ought to heard. Brad, what the hell's his last name? Brad Allen at the uh library, literally yelling into the phone so loud that I've got him recorded. On the phone, on my phone. I've got him recorded yelling at the cop that he wants harassment charges filed and the cop had to tell him there's no statute for harassment. Brad Allen has it in for this guy so bad. That ninety minutes, somebody else can do it. He walks in and five minutes later, it happens. There's a couple of people that I'm gonna name right now that have to do with the library or had, had, you know, one of them do. These are people that I know. An attorney that's represented me in the past. But the distaste for him is so bad. That they've opened up the opportunity that, and it's a, it's a gracious invite to treat him bad and anybody else that stands up next to him. How do I know that? Mandy Leibold, another one of those library people? Ask me how my wife was doing. They knew each other. They went to college together. Right after she said that. She decided to mention that her husband Terry does divorce law. That's your fucking library people thinking they can slight people. Thinking they can treat people like shit and get away with it. Fuck you for voting for that, Bart.
Dude, that's, that's how far this shit goes, guys. I mean, dead serious. That is exactly how far this shit goes is. Their spite and their hate is so damn severe that. The minute him and I kinda teamed up and, and it's funny, we've talked about it. It's that night that it, it. What really got me was the night he walked out and he was getting arrested or thrown out of the meeting. He goes, hey, first amendment guy, what's going on? You're not gonna stick up for the first, you know? Got me to thinking, he's right. He's right. You know, so we got together and as the minute I did, man, I got criticized and I got. I had a lot of people come down on me about it. And why are you sticking up for that guy? And I said, fuck, cause he's right. He's right. He's got a right to speak, just like you do, just like anybody else does. But the minute that you come up and you say something like that about somebody that they have decided does not deserve that right to speak. Now you are just as bad as they are and you're, you become just the same target as them. You know, I would have never believed that a, that a person that. We knew would have said something like that to me, but she was a library, library board member, you know?
Yeah.
And, and would that have happened had I not been there with you? Probably not.
Yeah, I don't know, man. It's fucked up.
But when they, when they take that hate and they superimpose it on somebody else, I mean, that. That shows a lot of character to me. That shows a lot of their character.
Oh yeah, they have and they have none. You know, and another thing that's fucked up, sitting here thinking about, you know, in April of twenty twenty-two, I filed to run as a Republican candidate. For um Douglas County Commissioner in, in District One. And the following month in May, um. I was standing on a street corner with a campaign sign that I had and a, and a guy threatened to. Shoot me and I had it recorded. I had audio of it recorded. I was filming. He threatened to shoot me. He was gonna pull into the parking lot that I was standing by. He was gonna come over and shoot me. And he went and he pulled in the, the parking lot, backed out of there after a little while. He didn't get out of his car. He backed out of there and then, and then drove his car onto the, onto the street. And pulls up next to me and points the gun at me and then drives off. And I called the, the, called the police. Whole separate side story. They didn't, they let the guy go. He didn't get charged, of course. Not only that, you know, I, I reached out to Chad Lawhorn um at LJ world to let him know and also Mackenzie Clark. And, and I spoke to Chad Lawhorn on the phone right after that, see if he was wanting to report on it. And he straight up said he wasn't gonna report on it because he didn't have enough, just like they told you with the Amber Sellers lead. They, they, it didn't, they didn't have enough. I'm like, what the fuck are you talking about? So, so you have here with Amber Sellers, there are no threats at all. No police called for threats. No, no, nothing. There's no incidents at all for it, but yet they're reporting on it as though she's experiencing. Meanwhile, as a, as a candidate for county commission, the headline should have been, you know, Douglas County uh commission candidate has a gun pulled on him while campaigning. I mean, that's a, that's a newsworthy story. Instead I was, instead I was met with, oh, there's not, you don't have enough. Bring me more and, and maybe, you know, basically he didn't believe me. Meanwhile, Amber doesn't have a shred of evidence and they report it as though it's fucking fact. And that frames the narrative for the entire fucking city to see that. We are a threat. We are dangerous. We are unhinged. We are doing things. Meanwhile, the sheep there aren't thinking to themselves. Well, wait a minute. Actually, there haven't been any police reports, but the, the, the narrative is out there and it's spoon fed to them. So we're, we're the bad guys. We're costing them four billion dollars in money there.
Well, and Justin, I want to show you something real quick because um. I'm pulling this up here. I want to get it up where I can see it because you know how the Lawrence Journal World is and with their stories. Yeah, I'm gonna skip this one real quick and pull this up. So we've seen them, the way they run their stories and the way they keep things up on this, on the front page when they want certain stories to trend and certain stories to be seen by people. Um, let's take a look here. Okay, so this is the Lawrence Journal World page right now and. Now I can tell you that, that, that article for uh Sellers, didn't it start out up here in Maine, in the main area?
Um, I'm, I'm.
Pretty sure it did. But then when I, when I next saw it, I think I saw it up here in the main area in, in the, in the upper left. And then I saw it right over here in the latest news area. And then before too long, it had dropped down in here into this uh. Where's, uh, right here, city government area. Okay, here it is. But it hit a drop down. It was the lead story for the city government area. And now look at it. It's the last story on the page. This one's about to migrate off of the front page. Within a day.
The seller.
This is the seller story. Look at it. Look where it's placed. It's right down here at the bottom. I don't know if you could, can you see that right, but right above more city government?
Yeah.
And I mean, I'm telling you, talk about running that thing off the front page real quick. That's pretty damned interesting.
What do you think it means?
I, well, I think it means that Sellers didn't get the feedback that she wanted because honestly, um, if you go look at their Facebook posts. A matter of fact, that's another one we ought to just go ahead and pull up is their damn Facebook post that they had. Because people got out there and started ramming sellers about it. They got out there and started criticizing her and saying that, that she should just buck it up and go up there and, you know, take the heat. Here, let me uh.
Well, there, there was the, there was the same kind of blowback on Facebook, um. On Facebook, when the first article came out in September where she said she's not gonna sit out there. And I, and I think that this is like a perfect example of society is that. Everyone is willing to, to, well, not everyone. There's still people that are like, I ain't even gonna post shit online, but people will, will freely talk. Their, their feelings and their rights and, and shit online. But get them to show up at a meeting and, and say the same things and voice circles. Oh, no, 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 not gonna happen. No, just, just Facebook. Just Facebook is the only place they'll talk.
Now I'm gonna qualify this, um, because I, good, good to see there's some names here that I know who they are. I recognize. Cause you guys, uh Joel Jewelsguard, John Helleniak and some of you other guys that have, that have commented on this. Um, you're gonna be able to see comments by a city person talking about city business. That I'm not able to see because I am blocked from that. I don't know how many of you realize this, but uh, a city person conducting city business in the open and blocking a citizen from it is kind of a problem. Um, cause from what I'm understanding is Misty Boss Hastings has uh, has been out here commenting on this.
And as. She has and, and she's been saying some, some pretty foul stuff and, and, and been lumping me in. Uh, you and I get lumped together and on everything. I lumped together with the Jill Gillette thing, get lumped together here. She, she's saying that we're, we're both like confronting her. And like yelling in her face and spitting all, all kinds of stuff.
Let me see, uh, but, but while you guys take a look here, I mean, these are the comments that are coming through about sellers. And about the way that she is acting. So I think she's getting scorched and.
I think so too. And, and I think what would be awesome is that those same people would show up to city hall next meeting and say those things during public comment. To her face and let me really drive it home. Really see if you get some change. I mean. We can always say to her blue in the face, we can't make nothing change if, but if we're not actually trying to do it, then you know, we don't really have anything to complain about.
But I mean, she's, she's not doing herself any favors with this stuff. You can see in the comments here that it's just.
It's not popular. It's not their position.
No. And the only one that she gets a popular comment from is Misty, I think.
How could it be a popular position? Aside from the fact that she's basically giving the finger to, to Lauren saying, I'm not gonna listen to you. So it looks like she doesn't want to listen to her constituents. It looks like she doesn't believe in free speech, but on top of that, look, it may, look at her character. It makes her look like the coward that she is, that she's uh, she, she can't listen to just, just some words. And that in order to, instead of facing issues head on, she has to run and hide behind a uh, a, a closed door. And at the same time, try to turn it around on the people that are in there speaking and saying, well, they're the bad guys. They're the reasons why I gotta go and do this. It's a bad look, complete bad look from top to bottom. And the fact that fucking Chad Lawhorn aligns with that is a bad look for him from top to bottom as well. You, you support.
Exactly.
You don't see the character flaws in Amber Sellers doing that. You, you're perfectly fine with the leadership. Leading from a fucking room where she's like a. leadership leading from a fucking room where she's like a bunker, where she's hiding out from words. And LJ World, Lawrence Times, you guys are completely fine with that. Okay, all right. And you know, I guess that is a reflection, you know, the the system, the system is the system that our our representatives are a reflection of our constituents. They they represent who the people are. And that's Lawrence. That's Lawrence right there. They're okay with their person running and hiding to the back there when when the heat gets turned up on her a little bit for her own actions, her own accountability pauses her to run away.
Exactly. Let's see here. I believe that I have found the mystical Misty texts.
I don't even I don't even know who she is. I I couldn't point her out. I've never talked to her before.
So yeah, this is Misty Bosch Hastings, folks. Now, she is the homeless programs coordinator here in Lawrence. These are the comments that are on that article that you were just looking at that I'm not able to see, right? This is her little crowd because she has me blocked. Now again, this is a city employee conducting some city business while she has a citizen who is outspoken about these things that is very concerned about this and discussing it. So you can see here, you know, she's talking about where you can go to work and be verbally assaulted, bullied, screamed at while spit is flying in your face. Who is that? Is she equating you and I to something like that?
Well, and 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 she's drawing a false comparison because if that's happening at her work, that's not happening at city meetings. None of what she just described there is is she can't relate to anything that's happening at the city meetings. I don't even know why she's bringing that up.
She doesn't come to the city meetings. The only time she comes to the city meetings is when she's I I think what she's trying to do is is say that, well, Amber, if you think you got it bad, you ought to come do my job.
Oh, is that what she's saying?
Well, I mean, maybe that's what she's doing, but I'm I don't know. I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on her bullshit, but just to let everybody know that this is a city official talking city crap.
Well, I thought that's the point she was trying to make is that, hey, you know, government employees, look, we we this is how we get treated as government employees. They they yell at us, they scream at us, they verbally assault us. I think that's what she's trying to say. And it's like, bitch, nobody's fucking doing.
Well, and she's talking about abuse. She's talking about abuse and nobody's ever abused Misty.
Well, no, those are those the the words that they go with. They they say things like abuse and they say things like behavior and they say things like conduct. They throw those words in there to twist that actually words are being said to them and because they don't like those words or they're uncomfortable with them or they're irritated or they're bothered, they try to frame it as we're doing something other than what we're doing. Because they know they can't get us to stop because it's First Amendment. But if they turn it into physical or behavior or anything like that, then it starts to get into criminal. And that's why they do that shit.
But see, they can't get to criminal, though.
Huh?
They can't. They can't get to criminal. That's the problem for them. They keep trying to trying to act like we've done all kinds of things that can be considered criminal things and they're just not.
That's why it goes back to if LJ World had a shred of of integrity, they wouldn't report that there were threats going on because they would know that none of that has happened because it because like we said, if it did happen, LJ World would be running a front. I'm not even joking. It would be a front page fucking pay news story in Lawrence. It'd be it'd be the top story. It has never happened. It has never happened. And LJ World knows that, but they still run with that fucking narrative as if our behavior is doing something or we're we are actually threatening them. It's like, show us the fucking receipts, man. There are none.
Well, and no different than what happened down in Elk County with them, you know, she's going to make all kinds of things saying that we did this, we did that, and no charges are ever filed.
Well.
How do you get there?
And and meanwhile, LJ had LJ World, Lawrence Times have all sorts of examples, all sorts of receipts that they could use to to report on how the city commission has is inconsistent and is is unequal and discriminatory. They have all kinds of examples and they haven't reported a single thing about it. But meanwhile, they have no examples of threats. No examples of 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 abuse, but yet they report it as though it's happened. It's
Exactly.
An amazing fucking thing, man. They are fucking liars. Chad Lawhorn is a fucking liar. And they're doing everything they can to come after our reputation and smear us with these fucking narratives that we're doing things that we're not doing. He is a fucking liar.
And you know, if we didn't have it all on video.
It still is a fucking moron.
If we didn't have it all on video, they their story would carry the day and we would have done all those things.
It 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 probably still is carrying the story to the majority of morons there that that would even refuse to look at the video evidence. It's out there. All this stuff is on our channels. You could go look.
It all is. Every bit of it. Chris is not wrong. They like to be sensational because they try to sell papers because they're a dying paper. I mean, I remember when LJ World used to print and they used to have paper carriers going in there behind there picking up papers at night and the you know, they'd be all over the place. And now they're down in a strip mall somewhere and they put out a two times a week edition or something. I don't know.
Well, I'm I'm flattered, LJ World, that I'm I'm your biggest draw. Me and Michael are your biggest draw. I'm flattered, but it's fucking dishonest. It's hypocritical. You you all are liars and you're attempting to do serious fucking damage to me to me and Michael. So.
Well, and I told I told Chad Lawhorn here not too long ago in an email. I told him I bet I get more hits than you do on a daily basis, so.
No doubt about it.
I'm sure he didn't like that too much. But I'm gonna go ahead and
stupid they are. They're they're they they are refusing to even do anything on YouTube. Their their YouTube channel is as fucking stagnant as possible. They're just refusing to even do anything that could could boost views without having to do these smear things, these sensational pieces. They're so far behind on everything.
Well, and honestly, I went out to take a look at this stuff and their their highest view video is the same one I figured it would be.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, I'm gonna fast forward this up to the seventeenth, which is the day. This is just a couple of days ago when we went in there. And you know, the I think this evening when we went in there is was it the trigger for something that Amber's all of a sudden has to go run and hide again?
Well, he called her out on it again. You call.
Is is that all it takes?
You know, it it seems like, you know, the the headline of that article says like if if the abusive behavior persists or something like that, like she she just wanted to get back out into the headlines or something like that. Like she's still gonna be there, but I might not be if these guys don't knock it off kind of thing.
I don't know. Well, this is uh this is public comment from Tuesday night. And let's see here what Amber found just so horribly objectionable.
My name is Dr. Justin Spees. In August of twenty twenty two, Kansas voted to not ban abortion. And it wasn't even close. It was sixty percent to forty percent. And here in liberal Douglas County and liberal Lawrence is even worse, eighty two to eighteen percent. The other day on December fourteenth, the Lawrence Times published an article titled Kansas Provided More Abortions in Twenty Twenty Three Than Ever Before, mostly for out of state patients. The article says more abortions occurred in Kansas in twenty twenty three than ever before in the state's recorded history, driven by a surge of patients living in nearby states with abortion bans. A vital statistics report released Friday by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment said nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty seven abortions occurred in Kansas in twenty twenty three. Just think of that, nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty seven abortions. Those are legal child murders. The twenty twenty three figure represents a fifty eight percent increase from the twelve thousand three hundred and eighteen abortions or legal child murders recorded in twenty twenty two and a one hundred and forty eight percent increase from the seven thousand eight hundred and forty nine recorded in twenty twenty one. The twenty twenty three report shows that less than a fourth of the patients who received abortions at Kansas clinics for in-state residents. Texans made up the largest portion of patients followed by Kansans, Oklahomans, Missourians, and Arkansans. More than nine in ten abortions occurred before the thirteenth week of pregnancy. None happened after twenty two weeks, which is the legal limit in Kansas. Look at that fancy wordplay there, assuring us that, you know, none of them happened over the the legal limit of twenty two weeks, but up to twenty two weeks, perfectly fine. That's five and a half months. Five and a half months to kill a baby. Kansas started reporting yearly abortion figures in nineteen seventy one. The previous record was set in nineteen seventy three when the state recorded twelve thousand six hundred and twelve procedures. In an email, the anti-abortion lobbying group Kansans for Life called the increase of abortions last year heartbreaking. The surge of abortions in Kansas is a heartbreaking reminder of the abortion industry's relentless targeting of vulnerable women who are no longer protected by enforceable informed consent laws or basic abortion facility inspection safety standards. In twenty twenty two, Kansas voters overwhelmingly rejected an anti-abortion ballot measure that would have enabled state lawmakers to severely restrict or ban the procedures. So good job, Kansas, red state Kansas. Uh, you had a chance to ban it and instead nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty seven children were killed. Children and grandchildren were killed and I I know Christians as well that that voted for this as well, so-called Christians. But it doesn't take to to be a Christian to understand that this is child murder. So I'm asking the city commission here to do a proclamation that you're making Lawrence a sanctuary city for all unborn unborn babies to not be murdered.
Hey, Chris made a good point there in the the comment that you just had up there. So so LJ World reached out to Misty Bosch Hastings on her fucking her her message in Facebook comment, but they didn't even bother, of course, to reach out to me and you, even though we're named in the fucking article that they're that they've published. Is that what happened? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. I'm sorry. I don't ever get a call from them. Do you?
Oh, no, but I'm saying like they they reached out to Misty based on her.
That's what he's saying.
But so it's like, come on, give me a break. Really? The story is Misty Bosch Hastings Facebook comment. You guys wouldn't extend us the courtesy to defend our own fucking names as you inaccurately.
Well, that's because she's scared, Justin. She she's scared and we're spitting at her, remember? You forgot that we were spitting at her and abusing her.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But like I said, like, I don't even know who she is. I've never talked to her. I couldn't pick her out in a fucking lineup if I had to. I I've maybe seen her at a meeting, but I don't know who she is. Some bitch, I guess. I don't know. Some feminist fucking bitch.
More about selling papers and helping the city. I don't know. We'll see what Misty's postings on Facebook. They're, I mean, they're trying to target us, Chris. I mean, you know it. We all know it. But you know, I want to go back to this video. I want you to look where where Larson is looking. Because she just can't help but show her disdain for him. Now, we go back to the beginning of this. And when when Justin first walks up there, she looks and sees who it is, you see. She looks out that way and she sees who it is. And I'm talking about Mayor Larson, who's over here in the center on the right, the older lady. She looks and she sees who he is. And then she can't even look at this guy. I'm just gonna tote it forward here. Look at where she 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 can't make eye contact. She can't look at him. She's looking away everywhere but him. The whole way through. And man, I gotta tell you, this is a there's one time she kind of glanced over that direction. A politician that can't even look at a citizen who's speaking to him. I that's fricking pathetic, man.
It's funny, when whenever I'm up there speaking, I always just assume none of them are looking at me. I I just assume none of them are showing me any respect.
No, I pay attention. I pay attention to them every time. And you know, I've noticed that just like I'll call out Bart here and you'll see him. I want you guys to pay pay attention when I'm speaking. Pay attention to Bart up here in the top right corner. Because these guys, they act like just because we make them uncomfortable with the things that we say, that it's some kind of abuse or it's some kind of a law violation or it's some kind of something that we've got to be thrown out of the meeting for. We make you uncomfortable because you're shitty at your jobs.
Right. It it's something that's off limits. Like, we're not allowed to do that because the they're they're the elected officials. They demand the respect. And if you do anything outside of that, then then you've wronged us in a way that we can now violate your rights and get you the fuck out of there, you know? And it's only because of you know, the the words. It's not behavior. It's not conduct that we're not saying when there's no threats whatsoever, you know?
Never.
Obvious what threats are. Threats are, I'm going to do this to you. Uh, that that kind of thing has never happened.
Never.
That's not how we are, man. That's not how we are. It's not what we're about.
Why can't you make eye contact with somebody you don't like? Why can't you look at somebody when they're speaking to this commission? You didn't even look his direction until you saw me filming you.
She's looking at me.
Why can't you look at somebody you don't like? You're doing it now because you kind of have to, don't you? And you want respect. Fuck you and your respect. Why are you here, Amber Sellers? Has the tone and nature changed enough for you yet? Or did your little charade end when Bart's not the mayor anymore to cover for you? And Bart, I noticed that you were just dying to shut Justin down there. I saw the face twitching, the the looking around. I mean, you were just the most uncomfortable dude in school. While he's talking. I'm damn glad that you're not sitting in a position to be able to get us in more lawsuits. Maybe you'll learn what it's like to sit for three fucking minutes and listen without pulling your bullshit. Just makes you uncomfortable as hell, doesn't it? Look at you in that chair. Just makes you uncomfortable in as hell to have somebody question your authority. Do you know how many lawsuits you've got the city into personally? Personally. Personally, Bart. We're going to court over mine. And I saw the officer coach you, buddy. I can't re I can't release the body cam, but I haven't. I saw the officer coach you. We'll be talking about that a lot. I got a minute and a half left. Amber, why the hell are you out here? I think I'll give about a minute and a half for her to answer here. Maybe she can tell us why her charade ended as soon as Bart wasn't the mayor anymore. Why did that end, Amber? And why can't you make eye contact with somebody you don't like? You guys work for all the people, not just a few of them. You need to fucking remember that. You don't just work for the few that may have voted for you, the few that like you, and you got your little shitty grin over there. Go ahead. Go ahead. You want respect. But you want to treat this like it's a damn game and that you're in charge of something. We're in charge, lady. The voters are in charge. And you're not making a good show of it when you act that disdainful toward the public. The amount of disdain on your face is offensive. I don't agree with everything he says, but I can at least respect an individual unlike you guys. Unlike you guys. And I'm pointing at a certain three of you. Cause you guys have been the most disrespectful sons of bitches on that dais for the last three years. We might have gotten some police accountability accomplished if you guys hadn't been playing your fucking games. Got your police review board going again, though, don't you, with Lockhart's lies? You know, his videos still got the most views on my channel. The most views. The guy sat here and lied and y'all lapped it up.
That's government redress, folks. There there's nothing there that either one of us said that's not government redress to the politicians that are sitting there who are responsible for those things.
Yep. That's right. Yep.
And she's gonna run out of the room again. That's what we're hearing now.
If you were trying to explain the word squirm to a person that didn't know what the word squirm meant, you could just show them the video there of Bart Littlejohn fucking sit there and say, that's what squirming is.
And you know, the thing is, is the reason he's squirming now is because he can't slap that gavel and throw me out anymore.
Yeah, he's wanting to. He's like itching for it.
Can you? Do you think he would have done all that without interrupting me and telling me to keep it germane to the city?
Well, wait till he starts fucking doing point of orders and like Amber Sellers, point of order and fucking trying.
I hope you guys all watched that little preview video that her and her point of orders, man. She is something else. Um, I'm gonna pull this article back up.
Yeah.
Because uh, this is what we this is where it's come to. You got city commissioner has been back in the room for general public comment.
There's a couple of of things just real quick on that. That article. So if you go down, it's like the it's the fourth paragraph. It's her quote. But it's the second half of that paragraph or second part of the quote where it says the paragraph.
Unfortunately, we've seen how insults and implicit threats disproportionately target people of color, religious minorities, LGBTQ plus individuals and women in public office, often in racist, misogynistic and homophobic tones.
Yeah. So right there, you see, now she's saying implicit threats. All right. So so what exactly is an implicit threat? Amber or Chad Lawhorn or Kim Callahan? Can can we get a definition of what an implicit threat is? And it is now like, oh, I I think he was implying a threat. And then look at all those fucking groups that bitch lists. But you know, it's the whole woke identity politics, marginalized identity group bullshit. And not a single one of those, eh, not a single one of those. And, and LJ World will do this to me. They, they'll say that. I've, uh, I've attacked, uh, I've been a critic of and, and verbally attacked the LGBTQ plus. Community and that, and that's not true. I, I've, I've protested trans shit. Um, but other than that, and every other letter in that group, I haven't said anything about that. As a matter of fact.
Well, and you know, the, the thing is, is what I can see him doing is saying anytime you bring up the issue is protest against it. And I can tell you that at the library, you brought up the, the contradictions between them allowing the gay pride flag and things like that, but you never. Directed toward it. You said it's a contradiction. You're allowing that, but not this.
Well, they're allowing it, which is a discrimination, but they're allowing it as an ideology as well. So they're, they're promoting their. Politics, their worldview, while at the same time saying, nope, if you're not down with this worldview, you can't come in here and do that as well.
Right.
That's discrimination. But the fact that she tries to lump all that shit in there, like, like if you're, if your average citizen ain't paying attention to what's going on at the city hall meetings, which most citizens aren't. Uh, they would read that and go, my God, what are these guys doing down there? Jeez, they're, they're after everybody. They're after the gays. They're after. Uh, they're after, who are the women? They're after.
Yeah, there's no, a, and you know, according to her, the only people we like are white men.
That's what it seems like.
And, and that is just such bullshit and it's, and, and I'm getting. She says here, while not coming, this is the newspaper, while not commenting specifically. On whether she observed an escalation at recent meetings.
Right.
She has no specifics. All these are is just general, I'm, I'm offended by their speech and, and so she tries to call it abusive and threatening and hostile. And all this other stuff that it's not.
And exactly, and this is such a one-sided story. So you have her quotes, but they couldn't come to us and be like, hey, Amber Sellers is saying that there's implicit threats and, and other things. What is your response to that? That they, there's no option whatsoever to clear our name, present our side. Not that I'll ever play fucking defense.
I never get asked for a quote for any of these articles that they write about me, never.
Never, not, not fucking one. The, the only time I ever got fucking quoted and reached out to was when Sidon dressed up as me. The Lawrence, uh, Times, uh, wrote an article about that. Hey, look at that.
Got Harvey in here. Hey, Harvey.
That, uh, um. They reached out for a quote on what Sidon was saying, the, the reason why he dressed up as me, but, but that's it. This would be the example, if you were ever gonna reach out to somebody for a quote in the story, it'd be this, right? Because you've named both of us. And you've also allowed just the person that's alleging these awful things against us as, as lies, as, as half-truths. Not even half-truths, as lies. And you're not even gonna give us the opportunity to throw a quote in there and, and say, and say, uh, the other side of the story. Okay.
They name us both specifically, but don't contact us for anything. Nothing.
Nope.
Nope. Yes, but that's how the, that's how the LJ World rolls. We've, we've known that for a while.
That's how they do it. And I keep going back to, you know, it's the readers that keep them in business. Obviously, people are keeping them in business, like stop fucking paying. For that garbage. This article here, regardless of how you feel about me and Michael, I guarantee you probably don't fucking like me. But just leave some common sense. We're laying it out there.
Guarantee they don't like you.
Well, I, I, I mean, I'm just saying like, you don't have to like someone that the LJ World is attacking to see it for what it is. They are naming both of us in that article and only quoting the person that's alleging these things at us when they very easily could reach out to us before they run the story for a comment. And they won't. So I just hope that the readers that see that start to just cancel subscriptions, not because they're loyal to us or like us. But because they, they, they don't want to be fucking lied to. They don't want to have shit misrepresented to them. Especially when it comes to the government. This, this is the government. Amber Sellers is a government employee and LJ World is doing her bidding for her.
Carrying their water. I mean, I, I've said that over and over and over. They're just carrying, carrying, carrying their water.
It's, it's sick. It's disgusting to think about that there are Americans that are like that, that Chad Lawhorn is an American, eh, believe it or not, an American that acts like that. Is, 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 it's just vile. It's, it's. It, it's, it's not any kind of behavior that you'd want anybody to look up to. I'll tell you that much. He's a complete loser in my book.
We've seen everything like this on steroids with Jill Gillette. Down in Elk County, the way she wields her authority and such down there. And I think, uh, pretty much. If you guys aren't familiar with Jill Gillette by now, I mean, that, that's a, that's a pretty simple one to, to keep in mind, but. There's another one that's been happening right now. Uh, there's a live stream going on right now over at the Reluctant Profits channel. And Lane's called himself Charlie Bucket tonight. Um, but Mike TV, okay. So we got a couple of guys here with funny names, but this is a, the same situation and we're probably gonna be wrapping up here, but you guys ought to need, need to be tracking this reluctant profit thing. Because what's going on over there is a judge literally is suing. Uh, the reluctant prophet here, Mike TV is what he's got his name for tonight, but, uh. The judge is suing him claiming defamation and seeking all kinds of ex parte relief. Because of the way that the reluctant prophet put up a video and put out a temporary restraining order to get the video taken down. Problem is, the video is up everywhere else. We've put it up on our channel. Um, I've put it up other places. I know I saw a couple of my subscribers that put it up on theirs. And it, it's not going away, but they still got that restraining order somehow. But Doc, have you been tracking that one?
No, I haven't.
Well, you ought to be keeping an eye on this one because this one is just as off the heasy as, as Jill is. In the way that this, this judge out there got.
Generally aware. I'm generally aware of it, but I haven't been tracking it.
Um, well, this judge just graduated Georgetown Law in fricking two thousand sixteen and ran for office in twenty twenty. Um, so. He's, he looks like he's twelve.
Yeah. Lacking experience.
Exactly.
That's a, that's kind of, that's a frightening thing to think that someone with such little experience can have so much fucking power over. Individuals and society at large.
Yeah, and somebody that doesn't have the experience.
Bro, Josh Bassel, Lawyer Dog, Gary Jones, Tuck.
Finishing up. Was this the live stream from?
With Harmony, Brent Shinko, Radio Nerd.
But you guys go check out what's going on over there with Judge Bell. Stay tuned for some more on Jill Gillette. Um, we just posted some information about the new hearing dates that are coming up. That'll be in January. Um, Doc, what do you got going on for the, anything for the rest of the year? Are we good for the, for the end of the year here now?
Oh, who really knows? Um, things just come.
Somebody's gonna pull a bad card, right?
Things just kind of come up. I, I was just sitting here thinking, I was like, it seems like every time you and I do a live stream. Um, in response to what either, you know, entities have done to us like Jill Gillette. Or LJ World, we do a live stream, days afterwards, they either do another story on us or press charges in some way, so. Who knows? In the next couple of days, maybe some will come up, but heading, heading into the new year, I think all of the. City and county meetings are, are done for the year, so there won't be any until, till the next year. So there's no meetings to attend or anything like that.
Well, I, you know, if, if there was ever a, a call to action to make. Let me do this. Let me say that everybody, I want you to, if you know a needy family out there that needs food for the holidays. Go buy a duck. And, and get them a nice moist duck with some dark meat and some white meat and some gravy and some mashed potatoes. Make a meal out of it in honor of, of some of these people that, uh, are just ducking stupid, man.
Yep.
So. Well, Doc, any last thoughts?
Oh, I don't think so. We went about two hours tonight, so I appreciate everyone that's, uh, that tuned in and is, um, is following what we're doing. And, um, is interested in what we're doing. And then just always, you know, just my, my typical hope to inspire people to go out and start using their voice as well.
Go to a meeting and that's the best thing you can do is go to a meeting and if you're not gonna speak, at least go there and start paying attention. Get up to speed on what's going on and I guarantee you, i- if you go to a, a meeting too often. You're gonna find something that irritates you that you're probably gonna want to speak about. If you're paying attention at all, because there's some screwed up shit happening in just about every governmental in the whole, in the whole country.
Exactly. And the, these meetings, um, they're, they're kind of their own ecosystems. Like you go there and you start to learn the ins and outs. You see the characters that are there. You see the people that speak, you see the regulars, but then you start to see how the commission operates and who, who the commissioners are and who's running stuff and how it's ran. What the city, what's going on behind the, the, the scenes behind the elected officials that are running stuff. Um, I say it's more interesting than anything you'd watch that you're sitting at home watching on TV. You're like, I can't make it to a meeting because I'm busy, but you're home sitting watching TV. I'm like, man, there's more interesting stuff going on down in city hall and you might as well go check that out instead.
Yep. Alright guys, have a good night. Stay tuned for more. We're always out there.
You can't say whatever you want and then face some sort of repercussions for it later.